Good evening. Please allow me to call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District to order. It is Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, and we're located at the Rio Grande City High School Cafeteria on North Farm Market, 755 Rio Grande City. The time is 6:32 PM. Agenda item number one, section one. Let me go ahead and take a roll call for purposes of determining a quorum. Mr. Dr. Veronica Barrera?
Present.
Thank you. It's okay.
Present.
Mr. Elizardo Velasquez Jr. is absent. He is at the Gruia Senior Mass. That's what he informed the superintendent. Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
He's at a conference.
Present by Azum.
Okay.
Mr. Basilio D. Vareal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Jay Peña.
Present.
And myself, Lady Ramírez, present. Let the mayors reflect that we do have a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pope, will you open the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Section three, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on April 6th, 2023, Public Hearing Held April 18th, 2023, and Regular Board Meeting Held April 18th, 2023. Motion and Discussion on Section Three.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Special Board Meeting April the 6th of 2023, Public Hearing April the 18th of the year 2023, and Regular Board Meeting April the 18th of the year 2023.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, Public Forum. I do have one notification by Adeline Barrera, who wants to address the Board on the Gruia Middle School Cheerleaders on their first place in Orlando, Florida. Ms. Barrera?
I'm Adilene Barrera, currently Gruia Middle School Cheerleading Coach. On behalf of our school, parents, and cheerleaders, we wanted to thank you each and every one of you for supporting our athletes in every step of the way, and thank you for everything you did for them. As many of you know, this last November, they competed here in Edinburgh, Texas, and was the only school to obtain a full-paid bid to compete at a national level in Orlando, Florida. This past month, we went and competed against four schools from other states and brought home first place, but came in one point short in obtaining the championship. To me, this was a great accomplishment because our small town of La Gruia hadn't had a cheer team for so many years, and for this, for these students to have gotten this far is more than amazing. Besides this, our cheerleaders scored an average of a 90.45 and scored higher than most of the All-Star teams that competed these two days. I have a parent here, Jennifer Falcon, that would like to say some words.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members, our Superintendent, along with everyone here. My name is Jennifer Falcon, and I am honored to say that my daughter is one of the co-captains at Gruia Middle School. First off, let us wish them another congratulations on their successful competition in Orlando, Florida. I know I speak for all of us parents when I say that we are extremely proud of you all. You all are the definition of dedicated athletes because each of you put in the hard work and the time to make this cheer team a success. Thank you to Coach Barrera for being the backbone of this cheer team. Your guidance has flourished each member of this cheer team into a better version of themselves, and they will definitely continue to prosper. Thank you to Mr. Rene Peña for bringing cheer back to the La Gruia area. Finally, a thank you to all the parents. Yes, this cheer team took a village. Parents, we are our own version of athletes as well. Despite the many things we have going on in our lives, we dedicated ourselves and made time to take our child to every practice, to every game, to every competition. Please, a round of applause for all the parents. You all should be very proud of yourselves as well. As you all can see, this cheer team was a collaborative effort. I wish Coach Barrera and the Gruia Middle School cheer success in their upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, with that being said, we wanted to thank you by giving you a token of appreciation for everything that you all did, and we wanted to present each athlete with a certificate of recognition.
They're present? That's what I was gonna ask. Are they present?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay.
Do they wanna come up for a picture?
Yes. That way we can have them come up for a picture, if that's okay.
Congratulations, ma'am, on a fantastic job for all the kids, all the parents, and everybody else. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to everybody. You did a fantastic job with it.
That's awesome.
How old are you?
Two thirty.
Congratulations.
Where are we getting here?
Roll time, boys.
What do y'all want?
Another tip for Florida.
We should probably hold it for a little bit. I think so. I think it'd be nice.
It doesn't matter.
The name?
Congratulations again. Congrats, congrats, congrats. Thank you all for the back.
Congratulations again to Gruia Middle School Cheerleaders and to Coach Barrera. Thank you, Ms. Falcon. Section five, Recognitions. I know the order has been changed a little bit, but we'll be starting off with the RGC GSD Athletes. Mr. Ray Ramírez?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. At this time, we would like to congratulate and recognize our student athletes who putting a lot, a lot of hours, a lot of sweat and tears and blood to accomplish their goals, and they really embrace the process of, again, committing to their sport, putting in the work, and of course, attaining their goals. And this year, we're very fortunate to have won three district titles. Our first team that I would like to recognize today is our softball team, our Lady Rattlers. If y'all would come up, please. Our Lady Rattler are coached by Coach Nikos Meli-López, Anna Cortinas, and Robert Briseño. And I also wanna mention that this is their third district title in a row. They won back-to-back-to-back district titles. So again, congratulations, ladies. If y'all can join me up here.
Great. I have that on the floor.
If y'all wanna stand here in the front of the stage, girls, right here?
Yeah. It'd be better for the ceremony.
So again, congratulations to all the coaches and athletes for an outstanding season. Like I mentioned, this is their third district title in a row, and we're extremely proud of their hard work and dedication. So again, congratulations to them. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations again. Next up, I would like to call on our baseball team, our Rattlers, Coach López, staff. Boys, come up here. Our Rattlers are coached by Coach Iram López, Paul Bassan, Jonathan Guzmán, and Mr. Aligon Garcia. These boys won district title this year. They skipped a year, but again, they brought back the trophy. This is Coach López's first district title, second-year coaching, and again, we expect many more to come. So again, boys, congratulations on a great job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, boys. Thank you. Congratulations again. Thank you all for the back.
Congratulations again to Gruia Middle School Cheerleaders and to Coach Barrera. Thank you, Ms. Falcon. Section five, Recognitions. I know the order has been changed a little bit, but we'll be starting off with the RGC GSD Athletes. Mr. Ray Ramírez?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. At this time, we would like to congratulate and recognize our student athletes who putting a lot, a lot of hours, a lot of sweat and tears and blood to accomplish their goals, and they really embrace the process of, again, committing to their sport, putting in the work, and of course, attaining their goals. And this year, we're very fortunate to have won three district titles. Our first team that I would like to recognize today is our softball team, our Lady Rattlers. If y'all would come up, please. Our Lady Rattler are coached by Coach Nikos Meli-López, Anna Cortinas, and Robert Briseño. And I also wanna mention that this is their third district title in a row. They won back-to-back-to-back district titles. So again, congratulations, ladies. If y'all can join me up here.
Great. I have that on the floor.
If y'all wanna stand here in the front of the stage, girls, right here?
Yeah. It'd be better for the ceremony.
So again, congratulations to all the coaches and athletes for an outstanding season. Like I mentioned, this is their third district title in a row, and we're extremely proud of their hard work and dedication. So again, congratulations to them. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations again. Next up, I would like to call on our baseball team, our Rattlers, Coach López, staff. Boys, come up here. Our Rattlers are coached by Coach Iram López, Paul Bassan, Jonathan Guzmán, and Mr. Aligon Garcia. These boys won district title this year. They skipped a year, but again, they brought back the trophy. This is Coach López's first district title, second-year coaching, and again, we expect many more to come. So again, boys, congratulations on a great job. Thank you, boys. Thank you. Congratulations again. Next up, I would like to call on our boys' track team, Coach Bar Mois.
This is our Rattlers' district championship team, which was won here at the Sanchez Stadium this year. With us today, of course, Coach Bar Mois, head coach, Coach Valenciana, Coach Porras, Coach Ramírez, and Coach González, and Coach Villarreal. This is the Rattlers' third district title in the last couple of years, and Coach Bar Mois does a great job with the kids. And again, I'm extremely proud of the boys for winning the district title here at home this year. And again, congratulations, boys, on a great job this year.
Ready guys? Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again?
Yeah, one of our boys is a little bit late, so we're gonna, if you don't mind, take the picture again of the baseball team.
Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again? Yeah, one of our boys is a little bit late, so we're gonna, if you don't mind, take the picture again of the baseball team.
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again?
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Can we have a couple more?
Two.
Ready? One, two.
Thank you, boys. Thank you. Congratulations again. Next up, I would like to call on our boys' track team, Coach Bar Mois.
This is our Rattlers' district championship team, which was won here at the Sanchez Stadium this year. With us today, of course, Coach Bar Mois, head coach, Coach Valenciana, Coach Porras, Coach Ramírez, and Coach González, and Coach Villarreal. This is the Rattlers' third district title in the last couple of years, and Coach Bar Mois does a great job with the kids. And again, I'm extremely proud of the boys for winning the district title here at home this year. And again, congratulations, boys, on a great job this year.
Ready guys? Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again? Yeah, one of our boys is a little bit late, so we're gonna, if you don't mind, take the picture again of the baseball team.
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Can we have a couple more? Two.
Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again?
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Can we have a couple more? Two.
Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again? Yeah, one of our boys is a little bit late, so we're gonna, if you don't mind, take the picture again of the baseball team.
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Can we have a couple more? Two.
Ready? One, two.
Thank you, boys. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Next up, I would like to call on our boys' track team, Coach Bar Mois.
This is our Rattlers' district championship team, which was won here at the Sanchez Stadium this year. With us today, of course, Coach Bar Mois, head coach, Coach Valenciana, Coach Porras, Coach Ramírez, and Coach González, and Coach Villarreal. This is the Rattlers' third district title in the last couple of years, and Coach Bar Mois does a great job with the kids. And again, I'm extremely proud of the boys for winning the district title here at home this year. And again, congratulations, boys, on a great job this year.
Ready? One, two.
I would just remind you that one of our boys was late, baseball team, so they wanna take a picture again, if you don't mind. Coach López, if you wanna bring the boys over and take that team picture again?
No, it was a, we spent, we planned special exceptions. Right here, look. Special appearance, motion of watch, signed orders, supplemental petition and motion for summary judgment.
Who was late? I thought it was that spot.
Petition's filed, but we want to official today.
My camera. I'm trying to occupy it.
Can we have a couple more? Two.
Ready? One, two.
Thank you, boys.
Next up, I would like to recognize our state qualifiers. We'll start with the sport of wrestling. Coach, head coach, Coach Ron Pratt, Loetta González, assistant coach, and Cassidy Ramírez, assistant coach. This year, we had four qualifiers in wrestling. I'll call them up individually, if y'all wanna start making your way up here. Coach? We had Vivian Canales at 100 pounds, district champion, regional champion, and all-state, fifth place at state. So Vivian. We also had Leah Gutierrez at 165 pounds. She's also district champion, regional runner-up, and state qualifier. At state, she suffered an injury, so she was not able to compete, but again, very proud of her, and I'm sure she'll be back next year. On the men's division, we had Greg Vella. Greg is also 150 pounds, district champion, regional champion, all-state, sixth place at state. So again, very proud of this young man. He's also an academic, all-state first team, so very smart young man as well, so very proud of all our athletes. And last but not least, Aiden Stafford. I don't see him this, he had to work today, but again, also, he was a state qualifier and competed very well, so he's all, he will also be signing a letter of intent next week to compete at the Ozarks in Arkansas. So again, looking forward to that. So again, congratulations to our wrestling team, who did extremely well this year.
Ready? One, two.
Congratulations. Next up, I'm gonna call on Coach Compián, our powerlifters. Coach Compián?
Our Lady Rattlers' powerlifting team showed up and competed very well this year. We had three state qualifiers, Nayeli García, Asaneth Pérez, and Maya Magallanes, which is our state champion. If y'all don't know or have heard how much Maya lifts, she's extremely, extremely strong. They're all strong, but I think this young lady who won state this year, Coach Compián was telling me that she can squat 475 pounds, bench press 275, and deadlift 395, so I can bet she's probably stronger than most of us here, and again, wanna congratulate all three for doing an outstanding job this year. Congratulations. Ms. Yanelli García is also competing, will be competing at UTSA next year. She also signed a letter of intent, and along with Joanna Garcia and Christian García. So good job, Coach Compián, and ladies, congratulations on a great season.
Ready? One, two.
Thank you, ladies.
Next up, I would like to call Coach Omar Trevino, our girls' track coach, along with Victor Gonzalez and Luis Gonzalez, who are present to come up here. These are our girls' track coaches. To recognize our female athlete, Ms. Serena Ramírez. Can you please come up? Ms. Serena Ramírez is a three-time state qualifier. It could have been four, if not for COVID that year. Ms. Serena, again, like I said, is a three-time state qualifier. Last year, she ended up third in the event of the discus at state. This year, unfortunately, she didn't qualify in the discus. She had a little mishap in her regional butt. She did qualify in the shot put, and she was determined to bring back that gold medal. We could see it in her when she started competing, and again, it was very competitive. I wanna let you know that she PR'd by over two feet, which is amazing to PR by that much at the last meet of the year at state. And but again, it's the competition, the adrenaline, and again, preparation. Coaches, thank you so much for working with her and the rest of our girls. But again, Serena threw a 48 feet, seven inches in the shot put. She won state, like I mentioned. She broke the all-time valley record that was owned by the League of Ladies from Sherland Pioneer, but no more. And she currently ranks number six in the nation, so again, very impressive. She'll be moving on to compete at TCU next year, so we wish her the best. Congratulations.
Ready? One, two.
Thank you.
Next up, I would like to call Coach Mario Gómez, our boys' and girls' powerlifting coach at Gruia High School. Coach Gómez. Our Gators had two individuals qualify to state in powerlifting this year. Kylie Trevino, which could not be here with us today, she had, I guess, a prior engagement, and Mr. Raúl Galván Jr. Ms. Kylie Trevino ended up second place at state, and Mr. Galván, Raúl, ended up 12 overall among many, many athletes. So again, congratulations to them, to the coaches, for an outstanding job this year. So good job, guys.
Ready? One, two.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Peña? Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On behalf of our school board of trustees and superintendent and central office administration, we would like to congratulate each and every student for being so sensational throughout this school year, trying to not only study, but also compete at the highest levels, you know, throughout our region and throughout the state, as an exemplary, you know, for our district. So thank you for all your hard work, your dedication, and all your preparation. Thank you, parents, for supporting, you know, your daughters, your sons, and our school system, because together, look what we can accomplish. So congratulations to each and every one of you. You know, those are huge accolades to our district, to our high schools. You know, that's what we're all about. So you all did sensational, so keep it up. Thank you.
Guys, the only thing I can say is fantastic job on behalf of the whole community of Rio Grande City, from the state level to district titles to, I mean, you all did a fantastic, phenomenal job. Not enough accolades to all of you. Hey, it's just starting. For the kids that are gonna be here next year, well, you got another chance. For the people moving on, we're gonna expect to see you on TV, ma'am. Okay?
Mr. Peña?
Well, someone promised that I'd be able to touch the gold state medal. Someone wait for that one. I don't know. We had somebody a long time ago that won a state medal. I said tiempo también, right? Can't remember him. Was it Ray Ramírez?
Well, he was.
But congratulations. Y'all did fantastic. Thank y'all so much for everything for representing.
But I think his medal was a lot smaller than this lady's.
It's a lot smaller.
Mr. Pope?
Congratulations on behalf of everybody. You all are a bunch of special students here, and we have a lot of talent here, and I'm proud to say that I'm from here, and I thank you for bringing Stark County to the map. So thank you.
Most of our kids are gone, but for the ones that are still here, congratulations. You guys are doing awesome, amazing, and you're putting our name out there, so we're very proud of you. And for the coaches, parents that are still here, very, congratulations to you too, because it takes really a lot of work from the parents as well. So congratulations to everybody.
I'm just gonna add a little bit to that. I know some of the parents are still here, teachers, coaches. You know, we, the kids, children, the students that go to the district are called student athletes, because their first priority is to be a student. The athlete comes second. But the amount of work that they put into a love that they have, that's insurmountable. That's what showcased with all the individuals that came up here to be recognized. They deserve so much, and for me, one of the key words is perseverance, and a lot of these individuals, I don't wanna single out anybody, but some persevered. They didn't win the first time. They didn't get the gold the very first time, or the second, but they came through this year, and that just means they don't give up what they want. They don't give up on their dreams. You know, Serena's here. I know you're still here. You're one of those individuals. I can go into your accolades, but there's so much, but it's not like you got gold the first time. You had to work it, and I think that's the epitome of what a true student athlete is, the epitome of what one should strive for, and we're proud of every single one of y'all. I think somebody already said it, thanks for putting us on the map. But more than anything, it's just thanks for loving the sport the way you do, and I hope others get encouraged to do the same thing. So thank you, one and all. I appreciate it very, very much. Okay, I have RGC GSD Nurses Week. Mr. Rolando Barrera?
Sorry, guys. Good evening, Board President Ramírez, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Mr. Peña, staff and community members. So we come today to try to recognize our school nurses that we have here in the school district. I can't stress enough how important they are and how impactful they've been these last couple of years, and will continue to be the rest of our, of our school district years. Every, every, every day, they come to work, they come to tackle every single challenge that gets, you know, to our nurse's office, you know? I do trust them in making the right decisions all the time. I can't stress enough that with every year that we continue to work, their knowledge continues to be a lot more in, in, in every way, you know, from caring to with a child, their communication skills, everything that they do continues to be better. We thank you once again for this recognition, Mr. Peña, the Board President, but I can't stress enough that our staff and, our staff and community, our families, and our close
Sorry, guys. Good evening, Board President Ramirez, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Peña, staff and community members. So we come today to try to recognize our school nurses that we have here in the school district. I can't stress enough how important they are and how impactful they've been these last couple of years, and will continue to be the rest of our school district years. Every day, they come to work. They come to tackle every single challenge that gets, you know, to our nurse's office, you know? I do trust them in making the right decisions all the time. I can't stress enough that with every year that we continue to work, their knowledge continues to be a lot more in every way, you know, from caring to with a child, their communication skills, everything that they do continues to be better. We thank you once again for this recognition, Mr. Peña, the board president. But I can't stress enough that our staff and community, our families and our close friends that continue to support us with words of encouragement and support. I do have some of them here that I would like to recognize, and they're going to be lining up over here in just a bit. But I can't stress enough that we are here most thankful today for our school nurses at our campuses that continue to work extremely hard, you know, for your students. We take care of kids like if they're our own. Okay? So I thank you once again for this recognition, and a big thank you to all our school nurses throughout our district. Okay? I do have in order right now Mrs. María Guadalupe Salinas. She's in La Unión Elementary. I have Mrs. Leslie Orta at Alberto and Celia Barrera Elementary. I do have Mrs. Liliana Zarate at Grúia High School. I have Mrs. Cindy Gonzalez at Veterans Middle School. I have Mrs. Diana Marroquín at Veterans Middle School. Mrs. Delma Osuna at Grúia Middle School. Mrs. Martha Zarate at Grúia Middle School. Mrs. Evangelina Gonzalez at Grúia Middle School. Mrs. Delma de la Cruz at Roqueguerra. I have Mrs. Claudia Hernandez at General Sanchez Elementary. Mrs. Patsy Galván at Roqueguerra. Mrs. Marisela Estrada at RMS, and Mrs. Alinda López at RMS Early College as well. I can't thank you all so much for everything that you all do every day, and for everything you all continue to do, guys. Thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. Okay?
Before they leave, Mr. Peña, I would like you to start off. Comments if you have any?
Sure. Once again, we want to thank all of our nurses in our district. You know, the last two years have been very, very challenging for every single one, and they were there since day one with us and for us. So we want to thank them for keeping our students and our staff safe and healthy throughout. So thank you, nurses, on behalf of everyone in our district. We truly appreciate everything you all do. Continue being sensational.
Mr. Barrera.
The only thing I'd like to say, you went through the battles of COVID. Tough battles. I'll be honest with you. You are the champions of this district. You went through that terrible, terrible time we had, and I'd be honest with you, you were probably some of the most important people we had at every campus. And I want to thank you, because we've never, ever, you know, I'm 67 years old. I can't ever remember ever having a disease like COVID. And you guys were the champions of the kids, of our schools. So thank you for everything you do, girls, and boys, if there is any out there.
Mr. Jay Peña.
Yeah, I'll point out that I've heard, they're not stories, because I know that they're true, but I've heard accounts of students who actually show up with matted hair, students who show up with shoes that don't fit, students who show up with, I guess, you know, problems at home. And I know for a fact, those stories do reach our ears. We hear about you guys helping them comb through their matted hair, helping to make people aware that there's kids that have hygiene issues possibly because they can't afford things at home. We're very much aware. It does reach our ears. And I don't want to single any particular nurse out, because I know that all of you take part in it, and we do hear about it. And I want to say thank you for that.
Before I move on, is Mr. Castillo still on Zoom? No? Okay. We'll move on to Mr. Pope.
I want to say thank you. You all are extremely vital and important. You all play an extremely important role in keeping our students safe, and you all put y'all's lives on the line every day, and we want to thank you. And thank you for everything that you do.
Dr. Barrera.
Thank you, nurses. One of my daughters is always with some of you in General Sanchez. She, literally, it's every week she has a toothache, a headache, she hit herself, and I know she's well taken care of. Thank you so much, because you're patient with her. And, you know, you call me, and right away, the first thing you tell me is she's okay. But I'm calling, and I already know, after a couple of times. But thank you so much.
I'm going to add something to what Mr. Adolfo Peña said. With so many changes with the pandemic and you name it, you probably had to adjust more than most in the sense of what you had to do, what had to get done, what was considered passable, acceptable, you know, and it kept changing quite often. One day you hear one thing, the next day it changed to the exact opposite. But you all never failed, never complained. You did your work the way you're supposed to. Our numbers were low, and when they started peaking, you found a way to help with it, brought it back down immediately. So I'm going to end with something that Batu always calls Mr. Barrera Superman. I'm not going to say he's Robin. I'm going to say he's Superman because of you all. Thanks for you for everything you do. I appreciate it.
Mr. Castillo, I don't want to leave you out. I don't know if you have some words for the nurses?
Yes, I do. You know, I always remember Janie Lala. She was my nurse. She retired not too long ago. And you all leave an impression in everybody as we go. And I know you guys get to see all the kids, and thank you for that. And I know Mr. Real said it, in COVID, you guys were there, along with a lot of other people. And we do appreciate it. It was some hard times. You guys keep on going, and thank you for all you do. You guys do guys' work every day, and, you know, thank you for that. And I also want to thank all the students. Mr. Ramirez also, it kind of breaks up once in a while, but, you know, they did a great job, and we really appreciate everything. And, you know, we all build a future based on everything that we go through in life, and this is a great part for them. So thank you, students, parents, everyone, nurses. You guys are the best. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. The next recognition is Early College High School HEB Excellence Education Award for Lifetime Achievement from Mrs. Eliza Delgado.
Good evening, Mr. Eduardo Ramirez, Board President, board members, and Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., Superintendent, and all audience present. I am here to recognize an outstanding teacher from the Early College High School. I am accompanied by HEB administration from Rio Grande City. I have Ms. Joanna Salinas and Ms. Lilian Garza that are here. And I'd like to just give you a little brief history on this award. On Sunday, April 30th, HEB announced statewide winners for the 21st Annual HEB Excellence in Education Awards during a ceremony at La Cantera Resort and Spa in San Antonio. It was truly a memorable event. They had educators from across the state, school districts, school boards. They had principals. They had all kinds of educators being recognized as finalists. And they also had, which I found very touching, representation from the Uvalde School District, and HEB contributed quite a bit to that community. And so it was a very, very nice event. And I'd like to add that from 1,900 applicants, five finalists for the Lifetime Achievement Award Secondary were invited to attend this event. The finalists were treated to a weekend of fun activities that included hour-long interviewing processes. A final winner was selected by a panelist of judges, including former winners, school administrators, and university and community leaders from San Antonio. At this time, I would like for Mrs. Eliza Delgado to come forward as I share a short video that was produced by HEB during a recent visit to the Early College High School.
All right. So once again, what is it that we're looking for?
I'm Eliza Delgado. I'm the English 1 teacher at Early College High School here in Rio Grande City. The students that we get at this campus are coming from three different types of middle schools that service a whole bunch of different types of students. They might be very bright students, but they haven't been in a setting where it lets them really flourish and really reach their full potential. So when we get them here, we fill in the gaps, and we make sure that they succeed at whatever it is they want to do.
Eliza Delgado is a lifelong learner. She has made it her goal to continue her education. She continues to work hard and learn and research and study so that she could come back to her classroom and best assist her students. And at the same time, she knows that as a goal of an early college high school, it is to prepare students to take college courses. So she truly establishes a foundation.
We only have these kids for such a short period of time. We have to close that gap so that when they get into their college classes, they feel at home in that academic environment.
Ms. Delgado has high expectation for us. She does help us out in case we do need extra help. Truly, she's a really good teacher.
They find success at this campus, because we are a small campus, and our teachers are able to pay attention to them a lot more closely and build those relationships with the students.
Ms. Delgado has been an amazing advocate for not only her students, but also the other teachers in her department. Last year was my very first year teaching, so I knew that if I had a problem or if I just needed help. She had the most simple advice for me, and she made it all seem so easy and practical to apply in the classroom.
No matter where they end up, they're going to be successful, because they have that discipline already. They know to get things turned in. They know the importance of being on time and being responsible and being respectful. And, okay, like, they're going to be okay when they leave.
It is an honor to announce that Mrs. Eliza Delgado was named the winner of the Lifetime Achievement Award Secondary. She was awarded a check, and she has already received it, in the amount of $25,000 for herself.
Why'd you got to announce that?
And she was also, or we were also awarded $25,000 for the school. Congratulations, Mrs. Delgado. This recognition is well deserved, and we are all super proud of all of your accomplishments. I'd also like to thank HEB for recognizing not only our local educator, but educators that are so very important across the state of Texas. Mrs. Delgado, please accept these gifts as a token of our appreciation for all you do.
Thank you. Mr. Peña, some choice words?
I've known Ms. Delgado since Ringo Middle School, when I was a principal there, and she was always outstanding, always going beyond, you know, the call of duty as a teacher. So thank you, Ms. Delgado, for everything, all your years of experience here in our district, being loyal, the dedication, the passion that you possess, you know, is outstanding. So once again, we're super proud of you. Congratulations, and thank you, HEB, for being so generous.
Mr. Basilio Barrera.
Ma'am, what can I say? Absolutely, positively awesome. To represent your school and our community, and to be chosen among the best of the best. No words can describe the honor you've brought, not only to yourself, but to this community. Thank you very much, ma'am, for everything you do. You're truly an example for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Jay Peña.
I'll add that I've known Mrs. Delgado longer than anybody's known Mrs. Delgado, since we were little, little kids, little babies in elementary school together. She taught me how to read. I remember she'd get the books. That's too much? Is that too much? Okay, it's too much. But she broke up crying on that video, and I can tell you, that's the same. Mrs. Delgado, since she was little, she's always had a big heart, and I appreciate you, and congratulations. Don't spend all that money in one place.
Mr. Castillo.
Yes, Ms. Delgado, congratulations on this accomplishment. And, you know, thank HEB for actually, you know, bringing you and showing everybody in the state what you do in our area. And thank you for the representation. Thank you for what you did for all the children you will continue to do and you have done. And, you know, you'll take this with you forever. So congratulations, and thanks again.
Mr. Pope.
Here, simply, the phrase comes out to my head is, hard work pays off right there. And thank you for being a part of our district, and thank you for sticking with us. I appreciate every, or we appreciate everything that you do.
Dr. Barrera.
Congratulations. I think all of us have been students, and we have had that one teacher or those teachers that have left an impact mark in us. And I think you're one of those teachers for our students, and we're very lucky to have you. Congratulations again.
To me, it just reminds us of how selfless, you know, the job is, the profession. You know, sometimes you all don't do it for this kind of recognition. I think if you were to ask Ms. Delgado, was she expecting this because of the work she was doing, she'd probably say no. You know, she does it because of her selfless love and passion for the kids. Now, I love that HEB has something like this, because teachers should be rewarded for this kind of passion, this kind of love, this kind of dedication and devotion. Just like Jay said, it was very obvious in the video. It's not about the awards. It's not about winning. It was about you just wanting the best for your kids, and you're setting them up to do the best they can. You're teaching them, preparing them for what life has to throw them in the future. So again, just like everybody said, kudos. It's what an honor. You deserve it. Congratulations, and you made the whole entire district very proud. Thank you so very much.
Now, we'll go back to the first item. It was General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary OM Team.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools, and members of the community. I am honored this evening to present to you and recognize the General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary OM Team under the direction of their coach, Mr. Elias Sines. Odyssey of the Mind is an organization that teaches students how to develop and use their natural creativity to become problem solvers. After nearly 15 years of not competing, GRSC established an OM team this year and competed at the state competition in Dallas, Texas in April, where they competed against top schools and came out triumphant, receiving first place with perfect scores. Not only do we represent RGC GSD, but we are representing all of South Texas. The team of seven students, as well as Mr. Elias Sines, are deserving of this prestigious recognition, as they have worked very hard all year. Their determination, teamwork, hard work, and countless practice have paid off, as they will now be representing us at the world finals competition next week in Lansing, Michigan. On behalf of my campus, myself, and our supportive OM parents, I'd like to thank our school board of trustees and our superintendent for the support you have shown our OM team. We truly appreciate it and are thrilled to represent our wonderful district at the world level, where we will leave a mark. Thank you.
Board President, Mr. Peña, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will have some presentation of awards. Then we ask the board members to please join us here in the front rows. There's some seats for you all, because they've prepared their short presentation. They will be performing for you the skit that they'll be performing next week. So, Ms. Carmuena failed to mention that these kids have put in tons and tons of hours. They started practicing back in October, November, and if you know Mr. Sines, the kids can tell you, he's a driver, a slave driver, when it comes to practice and being there on time. But the commitment, and I think that the lessons that the children have learned are invaluable, and they will be skills that they'll use for the rest of their lives. So at this time, when I call out your name, Ms. Ayala will give you the certificate, and then you guys, if you can go onstage, and you all can shake the hands. Marielli Lopez. Marielli Lopez. Hector Rodriguez. Sofia Carmona. Ryder Santa Maria. Cassidy Garcia. Isabella Guerra. And not last, but not least, Gilbert Alanis Jr. We'd also like to recognize our coach, Mr. Elias Sines. And not present with us, but will be accompanying us with the team is Marta Vazquez. And then our principal, Ms. Brenda Carmona.
All right, Mr. Peña?
Ms. Carmona, Mr. Sines, and students, you all are amazing. You bring us back many years when OM first started in our district. I know Mrs. Adelina Berrial and myself were coaches, just like Mr. Sines. But, uh, unfortunately, we never got to world. But, uh, we're, wanna wish you the best as you travel on and go show what Texas is all about and Rio Grande City grew ISD, right? So, we're super proud of you. Go win world now. Best of luck.
Mr. Basilio Barrios?
Uh, just, uh, awesome presentation, awesome acting. I think some of you are gonna be in Hollywood when you grow up. Ms. Carmona and all her staff, thank you for bringing OM back to Rio Grande City. All my kids participated in OM. It's just a great thing. In fact, one of my kids, the oldest is thirty-nine years old. He still talks about when he was in OM. So, you're gonna have an experience of a lifetime, kids. Go enjoy yourselves, have a great time, and let's bring that championship home, okay?
Mr. Jay Peña?
Yeah, I'll talk to the kiddos. I'm gonna tell you something. I know what Mr. Sines first Odyssey of the Mind team was, it was in 1990. You know how I know that? Cause I was on it. And we went to state. And it was the first time I saw a big city, it was Dallas. And he's a fantastic coach and he still looks the same. No joke, it's weird. And so, I told him right now, I said, "Man, I don't know what to say." I said, "I remember, I don't know what to say. Ours was on Pompeii and I'm gonna go see it someday." And then I started rhyming, I was like, "What am I doing?" That's how it sticks, right? So, it's gonna stick forever, and I hope it does. You guys are doing wonderful. Keep up the good work.
Mr. Castillo?
Mr. Sines and everybody else that's involved, that was really awesome. And, uh, you know, it takes a lot of work to do all that and be in sync. And I'm, I'm sure that they put in a lot of hours to, to get that perfected. And congratulations, strive for the best, shoot for the stars, and, uh, good luck on, on world, okay? So, that was awesome. Congratulations.
Mr. Pope?
Thank you for that wonderful performance. I know you all are gonna do great. You all are gonna do fabulous in Michigan, and I wish you all the best. You all are a bunch of talented little, uh, little, little people. I am just amazed with you all's memory, honestly. But I know it, a lot of hard work went into it, and just keep up the good work. And thank you to the coaches as well.
Dr. Barrio?
Congratulations on your accomplishment thus far and best of luck in world. I'm sure you all are gonna do great, um, have a lot of fun, and, um, congratulations again.
For me, what I find kind of funny is that for 15 years, for some reason or another, the OM Odyssey of the Mind just stopped, ceased, or for some reason didn't advance the way it was supposed to. And your first year back, and it seems like, well, we didn't miss a beat at all. And that's kudos to these kids right in front of us here, their parents. I know there's some probably still here. Thank you for all you do. I know it isn't easy. As it's like someone else said, it's a lot of time investment from coaches, the, the kids as well, but also family members getting them to and from and doing all of those things. So, as somebody earlier had said, that when you all went to state and you won, they said, "Where are these kids from again?" Next time, you tell them, "We're from RGCGISD." "Cause y'all making us proud, and y'all know you're gonna do well at Lansing, Michigan." That performance was flawless. If you perform half as decent as that, I see y'all coming back with more recognition. Thank you so much for everything you do, okay? Parents to families.
Okay, that concludes the recognitions. We're in section six, Reports and Information. Item one is Update on Students and Staff Highlights. Mr. Osuna presenting.
Well, that certainly is a tough act to follow. I feel sorry for the rest of the world when they have to go against that.
That's true.
Mr. Board President, Mr. Peña, our illustrious board members, everybody here and everybody streaming us live. This is our video highlighting, uh, our accomplishments, our highlights for the month of April.
April was a sensational month and May is shaping up to be just as great. RGCGISD hosted the superintendent's kindergarten spring festival at the Fort Ringo Parade Field. Kindergarteners from all of our elementary schools had a blast. RGCGISD held its annual Top 10% banquet at the Versailles Event Center. The ceremony recognized the top 10% of students from each high school for their exceptional academic achievements. The migrant education program hosted the Easter literacy event for migrant students. Students in pre-kinders were treated to books, lovely Easter baskets, and pictures with our lovable Easter bunny. RGCGISD libraries received 7,389 books from the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Books Program. The books will be used for the library, the classrooms, and for students. The RGCGISD Special Services Department hosted an Easter egg celebration at the Fort Ringo Parade Field. Our excellent elementary, middle, and high school students had a blast looking for Easter eggs and enjoying carnival rides. Rio Grande City Gruya ISD held a groundbreaking ceremony for the new Gruya Middle School. This middle school will be the new home to all future cranes. We would like to thank everyone who made this possible. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., along with our school board of trustees, treated our RGCGISD students to delicious brownies and a card before their star test. This has been Tatiana Hernandez.
All right, item number two is Report on Construction Projects.
Here's our video on our construction. And I just, before, uh, before I, I presented, I would just like to preface it by saying that, uh, making the drive from Gruya to Rio Grande City every day, you get a chance to behold the construction or actually the clearing of, that will be the future site of Gruya Middle School. And I want to thank you once again to our school board, Mr. Peña, and everybody who worked tirelessly to make sure that it did happen. Things got in the way, but you superseded everything and you got to where it is. And it's, it, you can just glance to the left as you're passing by and imagine how it's gonna look. So, thank you. So, here's our presentation of our projects.
The upcoming RGCGISD projects for April are progressing very well. The multi-purpose, the Faculty and Student Testing Center will house the main networking station, which goes out to all campuses. It will also house meeting rooms for staff development and campus recognition. By keeping the integrity of the previous building, it will also house the superintendent's offices and the meeting center for the school board. The new Gruya Middle School will be located on the south side of Highway 83, adjacent to our beloved Gruya High School, providing easier access to our cranes for students and residents alike. This state-of-the-art facility will benefit our students and our entire community. This has been Tatiana Hernandez.
All right, item three is Report on Region One Driving for Success Program. Debbie, Mr. Ms. Debbie Martinez?
Okay, well, let me start by introducing myself. Good evening, uh, it's Mr. School Board President, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., and board members, members of the audience that are still present. My name is Debbie Martinez and I work here with our district as the Curriculum Instruction Grant Liaison. During the fall semester, Dr. Judith Solis from Region One approached our department in regards to participating in a free online driver's ed course. We recognize that one of the barriers to students pursuing post-secondary education or employment opportunities after high school is the issue of transportation. Driving to either school or a job without having to depend on someone else limits their opportunities. Region One Education Service Center entered into an agreement with Driving Quest, which is a Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation-approved online driving course to create Region One ESE Driving Toward Success Initiative. This program offers an online learning component of the driver's education process. Once the student completes the required classroom hours online and practice driving hours with parent, they are able, they are able to take the driving test with the DMV to receive their driver's license. Through Region One, uh, the grant that was offered to us, there, there are two options to taking this course. There is the, the free program, and the ones who do not qualify for the free program have to pay, um, a fine of $165. The free course for the students are ages 15 to 22 who are identified as 504 or special ed. And then, like I said, those who don't qualify, they, for the free access code, they are able to take the course for $165. They can pay directly online, um, and they can also pay in person through myself or through Michelle. She is the other representative from, from our department that's working with me on this project. This is only available to the RGC students, uh, RGCGISD students who are currently enrolled, uh, with our district. So, once again, it's ages 15 to 22.
So, it's, it's free, ma'am, to, to our students?
For 504 students and special ed students. It's free. I know that they were speaking, um, to see if maybe they can include other, um, groups, but...
And it, and if somebody is not in 504, special ed, but they're...
They pay $165.
Isn't that bad?
Yes. And the good thing about this program is that it is, um, it's licensed and it's accepted by the DMV. There's a lot of programs that are online right now that, um, they, they offer it for $80, $90, but they're not licensed through the DMV. So, when they go with their paperwork, the DMV will turn them away and say, "Sorry, that's not one of our participating programs." So, this one for sure is, is through Region One and it is accepted by the DMV. So, um, there's two different courses. We have the, the teen one and we have the adult one. Both are offered in English and in Spanish. The teen one is ages 15 to 17, and adult one, adult students are from 18 to 22. Right there, okay. We started the registration for this program mid-February. Those who qualified for the free course were given the option for registering for one of the three classes. We put them in classes because we have to monitor their progress. We have to make sure that they're being able to have a location to, at the high schools so that they can take the course. And then, we have to make sure that they finish it accordingly. Those who qualify, uh, those who don't qualify and have to pay the $165, they start the class immediately. They are not put into a class. They are limited to two hours a day. And, uh, they are, uh, like I said, they're being, they're, we're able to monitor all of them, whether they're 504, special ed, or the, the ones that they pay. We're able to let, uh, go into the system through their website and we're able to see how, how they're doing on their quizzes, on their assignments, how long that they have not logged on. So, if they haven't logged on in five days, we're able to send them an email saying, "Hey, you haven't logged on, you need to log on." So, we're able to monitor it that way. I know we're, uh, for the payments, we've, I've spoken to principals and the, the principals from the three high schools, and we have a schedule of payment dates so that they can let their students know that we will be on campus to accept payments in person. Or help them to register if they've already got their parent consent to register for the course. Uh, since we started this program, we've had, um, a total of 43 students in progress. Twenty have already completed the course, which meaning the, the classroom course. They haven't completed their driving hours. So, and then we have 15 pending regis, uh, they've already registered, but they're waiting to be put into a class or pending payment in person. Here, we have a breakdown by schools. Um, if, uh, we have early college, Gruya High School, and Rio High has our most enrollment. So, um, if you all have any questions, my name is Debbie. Michelle is another person that is a contact for this program. Her phone number is 370-4721, mine is 716-6721. We're available to, for administration, parents, student staff. My cellphone number is in my email, so the kids call me when I'm at home and they're like, "I can't log on," or they're having issues. I know the program is very good at responding when we have questions. We've worked hand in hand in updating and upgrading the website to little things that could be more accessible for, for ourselves and also for the students. So, we've worked really well hand in hand with this project.
Ma'am, I have one question.
Yes.
I know they take the course and let's say they pass it. Does anybody practice with these kids?
It's a parent-taught driving course. So, once they complete their 32, if they're, they take the teen one, it's 32 hours. If they take the adult one, it's six hours. The teen one, after they take their 32 hours, then they have to do 14 mandatory hours with their parent. And then, after that, they have to complete 30 driving hours with either their parent or an adult that's older than 25 years of age and has a valid Texas driver's license. Once they complete their 44 hours, then they can go with their paperwork to the DMV and take their driving test to get their license. I'm available for any questions if you all might have.
Any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, item four is Report on Rio Grande City Gruya ISD and South Texas College Dual Credit Program. Mrs. Corvado?
Good evening, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, Board President, the board members, Mr. Peña Superintendent, and all present. I come to you today with a report. I was asked, uh, to put a report together on the success of our dual enrollment program. So, I'm bringing that report to you. And as you can see here, our report here, this is what STC and the district consider successful or unsuccessful. An A, B, or C in a course is considered that the student is being successful in the course that they signed up for and that they take. Unsuccessful is anything from a D, F, or W, or an incomplete. And, uh, we're very cautious, we're very cautious when we have students receive those because, of course, it can affect their post-secondary once they go on beyond our doors and, um, it can affect their financial aid. So, here I have... Can I go? There we go. This is the success rate that we've had from the three high schools. I went back, uh, when we started with the pandemic. There were some changes. A lot of our courses went from face-to-face to online. Our students, of course, sometimes were limited to the accessibility. So, we tried as best as possible to make sure that students had access to their online courses as best as possible. And if you see here, we went back to fall 2019. And when you see the number of students, that's actually the number of seats, not individual students. Cause I can have a student that's a freshman taking two courses and which is taking up two of those 450 seats. When I have a junior or senior that can take up... When I have a junior or senior that can take up to four courses, so they're taking up four of those seats. But we do pay by individual seats because we do also pay by each individual section. And I do want to say here that this is free to the students. It's not free to the district, it is free to the students. The district does incur the cost of each section, and from 2019 to now, it has moved, it has increased from 3,500 to 4,500. Currently, our sections are costing us 4,500. We do have, if it's a four-hour course, it does cost $6,000 per section. So, you will see as I move forward with the presentation where the cost comes in. But these are the amount of seats that we actually pay per school, the success rate, and the percentages. We have noticed in analyzing these numbers that our summer is where our students do have a little bit of difficulty with the success rate because they do not have any support. And that's one thing that, as a department, as a curriculum department, we have decided that this summer, we are mandating or making it mandatory for all our students that sign up for a dual enrollment course to come to summer school and show up. We will have personnel that will be supporting their online courses.
Ma'am, can I ask a real quick question?
Yes, sir.
If you look at the summer of 2021, let's just look at, you look at the high school, 173, 138, 79% passed. If you look at La Grúia, 78% passed. But if we look at the Early College, why do you think we're at 66.7? And in other words, you would think Early College should be better than the other two, or, I mean, I just, it's...
Yeah, we have a lot more students in the Early College that, because that is their program, their students follow that. So, we do have students that struggle a little bit because of the time that they do get there. But they do have support, and we did notice that, and we are working with our Early College to make sure that we do have the support.
Because if you look at the totals, grand totals, we're at 82.8, 81.6. And the Early College, which is, should represent early college correct, the ones who...
That is correct, sir.
It's at 75.6.
Six, yes.
And you would think the Early College should be doing better than the other two schools. That's looking at, from the outside looking in, I think.
Yeah, and we're having conversation with Early College to ensure that we pick up those percentage rates.
So, let me ask, when you have the 75.6, is it, you say unsuccessful? Is it because, I guess what I'm asking is one simple question. Unsuccessful because they didn't make the grade? Or unsuccessful because they withdrew?
It's a combination. We did notice that students that did not have the support have withdrawn, and those do affect post-secondary. So, it's a combination, but we did notice that there's a lot of withdrawals.
Do we have a higher percentage of withdrawing at the Early College than the other places?
Yes, sir.
Why is that?
That's a conversation that I need to have with that administration in that counseling department.
Okay.
Going on, we do go, this is what we currently have that is registered for this summer. This summer, we currently have enrolled, and like we said, we're mandating or we're making it mandatory for all these students to show up. We have 149 seats that we will be accommodating for Rio High School, and 14 seats for Grúia High School, and 243 for Early College. We do have only one summer dual enrollment site, which will be here at Rio High School. We will have all students reporting to Rio High School for these support courses.
I don't want to labor the point, ma'am, but even in the spring of 2003, look at the high school, 93.8, 86%, and then 72%.
That is correct, sir.
You would think the Early College should be doing at least what the high schools are doing.
Yes, sir, and we're working with that campus. All of these will be coming to the school. We do have Grúia that will be coming to Early College, I mean, to Rio High School for the summer. And like I said, again, they will be mandated to come to Rio High School. We go on to cost, and this is what we've invested, or the district has invested in these courses. These courses do not include your career in technology. Career in technology, this is just for academic courses. Your career in technology department does generate its fund. But the numbers that you just saw does include your career in technology students. Okay, so that success rate is there also. But this cost here is just for, this cost analysis is just for your academic courses.
Well, the problem, like I say again, ma'am, well, we're spending, again, Early College, $385,000. If we're passing a 65, 70% rate, we're not really getting a lot of return for our dollar, are we?
Yes, sir. We're revisiting our dual enrollment in how we allow students to take courses and when we allow them to take courses. We have not allowed students this summer to take second summer session for the reason that there will be no support for these students.
Do they take maybe a more diverse course load?
No, sir. There is one degree plan that is, that U.S. Board Members did approve.
So, it doesn't vary across schools, right?
It does not, sir. It's the same courses that everyone takes. That is a 1920. I did 21, 22. And if you notice there, numbers did go up. The cost did go up from 2019 to 2020, from 2019, 2020 to 2021. This was because we were in the pandemic. There, we did have to buy individual books for every student because we didn't have them in a classroom setting. They were at home. So, the cost of books did go up a little bit more during this year. I also gave you all, in your report, an individualized spreadsheet by section. Not only did I give you by semester, but I did give you by section so you can see where the success rate is per section, per teacher, and the cost for each section that I did not include in the PowerPoint. But you do have that in your packet. An online course will generate extra fees. For every student that is in an online class, we will generate a $30 per student, per class, to $40 if it's a four-hour course. And here's our 22, 23. Of course, 22, 23, we're still pending summer. We're estimating based on the enrollment that we have. I put on the report there what is estimated based on the enrollment. We still are pending the extra fees based on, once census and the rosters are finalized, they do give us that amount. And of course, we're working with books also. We have quotes. We have one new course that did come in this year. Our MOU with STC does allow us, when we purchase books, we have four years that we can utilize that same book regardless. If another book comes in, the professor will allow us to use that book for four years. But we do have a new course coming in this summer from Early College. So, we do have those quotes, and we will be providing you with that information also. I don't know if you have any questions?
Again, ma'am, I don't want to labor the point, but we're hanging a huge investment at the Early College, and it makes no sense for us to be passing 65, 70% of our kids when the high schools are doing 85, 90. I think we need to kind of look at what's going on and our kids withdrawing. In other words, we're making a big investment, and we need for those kids to be at least at what the high schools are. Otherwise, we're not really getting a return on our investment.
Definitely, sir. And like I tell you, we do have ongoing conversation, and we will continue with that and monitor that. Any questions?
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Jay?
Maybe we can revisit this next meeting?
Definitely, definitely.
Something we need to keep tabbed on.
And currently, I am receiving the numbers for this spring semester, so I can have a better, and we will have some information for the summer by that time, too.
Perfect.
Yeah, just let me know.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scobelo, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the rest...
Very high awakening, ma'am. Maybe we can note the withdrawal numbers like you did.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, okay.
Item 5, 6, and 7, 8 are not required to be covered. Item 9 is Presentation in RGC GISD Performing Arts Center. Mrs. Warren?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the record, Laura Nasrick Warren with the Warren Group Architects. I have with me Erica Garza, Chief Administrator and HR for the firm. I appreciate the opportunity, and congratulations to all the students who was highly entertained with the arts programs. Everybody seen the facade design? And with my luck, this doesn't work. Hiya? Okay. We have first the schedule. As we stated before, most of the consultants are now at over 95%. The specialized consultants that include your theater consultants and acoustics are on that 95 as well. Based on this, we are expecting to turn in 100% construction documents for review for the ISD on June 15. We expect comments back and having everything tied up with timelines for front-end specs, which include how we want to procure the project. Invitation for bid right now is set for July 1, 2023, with a private conference for July 14, and a bid opening on August 1. Once we review and approve the ranking, we will present for you to review, and hopefully will allow us to move forward with the best ranked and lowest bidder and then negotiating. Right now, we are expecting, hopefully sooner than this, if the negotiations go well, to provide a notice to proceed before the end of August of the same year. A facility of this type, and in this current economic environment, will take anywhere from 16 to 18 months. Of course, this will depend on who you award and their resources available. TEA has some new requirements... Okay. For fencing. As an effort to try to save money to both the City of Rio Grande City and Rio Grande City Grúia ISD, we have a shared drive located on the west side of your property, which represents some challenges with now TEA requiring for all the sites to be secured. But nonetheless, we were able to provide a proposed design that we have here for your review and approval. Noted in red is a gridiron fence. Noted in blue is an eight-feet-tall, also chain-link fencing. The reason we're doing this two types is one, trying to save money and allocate the gridiron fencing along the areas that front drives. This one also proposes to have three vehicular entrances that are sliding gates, and then two main ones that will allow you access into your building. The parking has to be modified a little bit. We lose a few parking spaces, but this allows the entrance and exiting, and also circulation around this gate areas. The biggest challenge is, and our regular vehicles, of course, is buses. How does this look? Okay. So, Ameristar makes, it's an all-American-made, aluminum fencing that is corrosion-resistant. It's modular, and it looks good. Then the other one is the typical chain-link fence that you see. We will recommend to have some planting of ombilias, which provides added security because they're so thorny, and they don't require a lot of maintenance. So, with that said, and as I promised last time, we did have a follow-up meeting with Senator Corning's staff, and we found a grant that we think applies to, maybe not only this project, but to many of the ones that you have ongoing right now that are challenged with budgets. We identified grant number PWEAA2023, which is an EDA Public Works Economic Adjustments Assistance Program. There are no application submissions deadline. The award for the grant started $100,000 with award ceiling established at $30 million. What we like about this grant, and I think that you are a great candidate for, is because this grant is lined up to support bottom-up strategies that build regional assets and spur economic growth in economically distressed areas. You have agreements with higher education and with this great city of Rio Grande City. So, that makes you eligible. The programs that you have here establish, this project specifically is located in a high-development area that is retail. We see direct and indirect impact on job creations. And our role in assisting you with this, even though we're not grant writers, we will provide you, courtesy, of course, a lot of all of the project description exhibits, whether they're in graphics or, you know, in grading format. We hope that this one will be a successful one. Again, we do enjoy a good relationship with Senator Corning, and that will aid on a side note. Last September, after being inspired by the teachers and how much they give on their time and efforts, but also financially, I offered a $4,000 grant, which we met within that month. And then the board challenged me. "Can you do $10,000?" And I said, "Yes." So, we have the additional $6,000 here with us right now. Congratulations to all you do. It's, I hope, you know, we're able to continue supporting. You know, we did also sponsor two teams for your golf tournament. And I understand that we used it once, so, good job. So, we wanted to present now. We made our commitment. We're proud to say that. And so, we have here the bank check and the paper check.
Take it, take it.
Y'all got a picture of them? Because I went like this, and the ink rubbed off. I just wanted to make sure it's the photo.
Is Noy stood online?
I'm here.
All right, thank you, Noy.
I motion to approve all items on the agenda.
One at a time.
It's a motion.
All right. Okay, so that concludes reports and information. We got section seven recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below, they're not called out, will be approved by consent. Consent agenda, item number one, consider to take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City, Gruia ISD. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item number one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which would be item one and item two is presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items one and two on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Penya. Any discussion required? There being an all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number three, consider to take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Girl Scout troops from Rio Grande City and Roma Ringel Middle School Cafeteria. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item three, four, five, and six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items three through six. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Penya, is any discussion required?
Question on item number four.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pope, on item number four.
There was, uh, approved payment to NM contracting, was that the only bid? Or, or we, we, we had already agreed to NM contracting, right?
For the welding, yes, sir. This is a first pay application request.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I have a comment on that one.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Pope.
Go ahead.
No, I pass the mic. Yeah, I just want to thank, uh, NM. I think we asked for the GAN chart. It's a very detailed GAN chart, very much appreciative of that. Uh, it, it, it serves us better in PDF format, just wanted to note to the board.
I think there's anything in the pack.
Thank y'all very much for providing it. It was very, very well detailed and that actually helps us a little bit. You know, that's, that's the safety blanket we get to hold on to when we look at the construction program.
Now you know who asked for it.
It was me.
Can I just, can I just ask one favor, sir? Can you enlarge it? Chase, this is a good thing. I can't even read it, sir.
I don't think it's possible.
Okay, try and enlarge it next time, sir, so he can read it.
But yeah, second that, thank you for that information. All right, um, there was motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Penya. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
Sure means I approve, but I'm abstaining from item at five and six.
Okay, so item three and four, motion passes by same sign. Item five and six, uh, Mr. Noe still is abstaining, motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Item seven, consider to take possible action on extension of bank depository contract for twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. I believe this is just all terms stay the same, it's initial two years with Lone Star National Bank.
I, I move that we approve item seven with some questions.
Got it. Is there a second? There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
No second.
Second by Mr. Penya.
What, I just want to know, what are the advantages of, of, of basically extending it? I, I know last time we did for depository and they're the only ones who bid on it, correct?
Yes, is that correct?
It was Lone Star, I guess, right?
Well, no, PNC. Uh, PNC had submitted a, a bid, however, we went with Lone Star because they're a local bank. Back then, we had DVA in the past and since it was not a local bank, we had always had to contact corporate instead of the local branch. So Lone Star has been doing a good job. If we have any trouble with payroll, uh, direct deposits, they're always there to answer our questions and to stop payment if there's a need for that or to issue payment right away.
How about the interest on bond, mon, bonds, monies and stuff of that nature? Do they do a good job with that and what are we earning currently?
Well, remember that with a pandemic, uh, the interest rates that we were earning, uh, had decreased. However, with this, uh, extension, they are increasing our interest rate to two point seventy-five percent.
So almost three percent?
From one percent.
Huh?
From one percent.
So you recommend it, Mr.?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
We do.
Any further discussion on item seven? There being an all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider to take possible action on requisitions of five thousand dollars and over. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item eight?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eight as presented in our board packet with the addendum of, uh, that was given to us. Also want to take the opportunity to congratulate, I think, uh, two gentlemen, I guess it's our Ugo and, and.
Mark Olivares.
Mark Olivares for making a grant and in that grant, we're able to buy, correct me I'm wrong, six, the, six new cars, uh, some equipment for, for, for our, our police department and things of that nature. I think we got a grant of half a million dollars or close to it. So to both of you, congratulations for doing a great job.
And we have another one tonight to approve. They have another resolution for tonight to approve to go out, so.
Well, I, I move that we approve that with the addendum because the addendum, the majority of it is, is on the grant related to what we're talking about.
Any further discussion on item eight?
On item eight, yes.
Yes.
I want a question where it says superintendent's office, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's for what?
Mr. Penya or Mr. Robles?
Yes, good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Penya and everyone present. Um, that one is the one that we have for the current NBC and the training center and we went out and of course got quotes, so I don't know if you have any particular question.
And this would be for the furniture or what is it for?
This, yes, it's for, hold on. It's a training center, yeah, it's, it's a furniture. I don't have the quote with me, but if you can see there, it does tell you, um, that it's mostly for like the tables and chairs that we're going to be having within the training center. So that's what this is mostly for.
The new addition.
Okay, so, so it's all the furniture. We're talking about all the desks, the, the tables, the things for the training center. All the furniture inside?
All the furniture inside within the training center. Yes, that is correct. And it's, it's kind of similar to the setup that like Region One has where it's for meetings and they have the big long tables and the chairs and all of that. That's pretty much what this is.
So we got the best quote?
The, we, this is what we have, yes. We got three quotes, so this is who we're going with.
That's the lowest quote?
The Indico? Yes.
That, is that the lowest quote that we got?
That's, well, one, that's a quote we have, yes.
The only one? Like you all didn't compare to anything else?
We're, okay, so what we're doing, just to rephrase what I'm going with, we went out and of course we're waiting on other quotes to come in, two more. And what we're doing is we brought Indico onboard. If for whatever reason, we went out, we did Gateway, we did JR. If and when they come in, if they were to be lower, at that point, of course, we'd have to bring it back or go with the lowest quote.
I, I don't want to be stingy, but this is one of the things I had already asked, Mr. Penya. What furniture do they have right now and can that furniture be used in the new building? Do we have furniture already that can be used? Uh, like do we have, uh, warehouses where we have furniture? My, that's my question, that can be used? Because really this is a lot of money and I know that we could use this money somewhere else. Uh, for example, this week or maybe last week, I saw that our wrestling team needed shoes. They were asking for, for donations and, and I don't think that our wrestling team should be asking for shoes, yet we're spending this much for furniture for our administrators.
Of course. And again, we're, we're bringing them to the board, to you all. So of course, if, if you do not approve the purchase, we do not go with it.
Thank you.
And this is new, a new addition, miss, or no, there's no furniture?
There's no furniture.
It's the new section.
Anywhere that you all can use meanwhile we.
You want anything?
Thank you for your, for your answers.
Mr. Robles, you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to add that this is for the part of the training center. We've never had a training center, so the tables are needed and also the chairs. If we don't have one, we would have to be using this type of tables and I'm not sure if we have enough for that.
Not for the purpose intended for.
Right.
I guess, is there anything out of the ordinary with this particular purchase?
No, I mean, it's a new construction. It's for the training center. It's not for the administrative offices, uh, which we had already approved in the past couple of months. Uh, this is for the training center. This is for the staff development center.
So this is for, for the children, basically, the training center is for children or staff?
It will be used for testing and for training staff.
So it's an investment in our case, not in the superintendent's office? Not in his direct office or something?
We had already approved that.
Is, is there possibly a breakdown of, of the type of furniture that's being purchased? Let's say, for example, you say.
Yes, we do have the, the quote from Indico. Yes, we can provide that.
Yes. Is that, is that in the packet?
No, it's not within the packet. It's not within the packet, but I can provide it to you. I can give it to Mr. Penya and of course he can forward it to you.
Yeah, I, I think the, the whole, um, understanding that if you say it's for the training center instead of actually bringing us what is being purchased, uh, I think that might clarify some questions.
Yeah, I don't know if in the future you would like for me to provide when it comes to furniture or specific things that can give you all a breakdown of it where it's detailed and then makes it easier for you all. And of course, at that point, you have more questions, then I can answer those questions.
Why don't you bring the breakdown better next time and that way we can look at exactly what's being bought?
Of course.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. It's, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
No, seconded the motion.
Second by Mr. Penya. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so signify by raising your left. Motion passes with a vote of five to one. Item nine, consider to take possible action on awarding of the following bids. Bids number twenty-three dash twenty-nine, which is the RGC GSD New Cosmetology and Barber Shop for Rio Grande City High School and bid number twenty-three dash thirty renovations for the fieldhouse at Sanchez State Drive. Motion and any discussion on item nine?
Mr. President, I move that we approve, uh, bid number twenty-three, twenty-nine and twenty-three, thirty.
As long as they are the lowest bids and I believe this is part of the bond project, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And NM is the lowest and of course the numbers are provided for you all there. And there was a meeting that we had with, of course, the contractors, uh, Mr. Penya, Mr. Salazar and, and other members. And of course, they were able to reduce it, if I'm not mistaken, about fifty thousand from the overall amount. So that's what we're bringing, uh, to you all and I provided the handout.
The good thing about it is that I can tell you the Career and Technology brings three times the weight of, of any other course. Career and Technology also pays for, for transportation. Be honest with you, Career and Technology is probably the most well-funded of all the programs we have as far as students. So you're not, I don't want to say we need to expand, but that's what brings the most money, uh, to our district from TEA more than any other thing. For some reason, they're pushing Career and Technology, but I know we get three times the weight. Is that right, Mr. Robles or am I, or am I? Yes, and we get more money for transportation that we normally don't get from the other ones. So I, I do believe that and I believe these are part of the bonds projects, correct?
Yes, sir.
No, no, the, the caveat of the going with the lowest bid that would say twenty-three, thirty, we would go with synergy.
Well, I wasn't about to bring that up. There's been, at the behest of Mr. Salazar, General Counsel.
I think before discussion, should we second or, or we?
No, I can do, I can.
If I, if I may, we did, we did have three bids, I believe we had three bids and then what we did was we sent out an email because they were all fairly close. So we sent out an email to all three bidders and said, all three of you are very close and we'd like for you to give us our, your best and final offer. And so they did and we, we did have some substantial.
What substantial, sir?
I, I believe in one of them, it was about two hundred thousand dollars.
I'll be exact, it was two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollar reduction.
So page one thirty-three is not accurate numbers?
That's not the updated numbers.
Well, we got, we, again, those were the ones that were done at that time. That's when we got the bids, they did the backup. And then we had a meeting last week and we gave them three more days to give the, the lowest and best offer and we just got those in today. So, but it's about a two hundred and forty thousand, two dollar difference.
Yes, sir, if I may. On, on that synergy, of course, it came in at the lower amount, but based off of what we put out on the specs, they did not provide the equipment. They did not propose on the equipment we had put out there on specs. So of course, because of that, we had to disqualify them, even though they were the lowest, because they did not provide that. So we had to go with the second one.
Yeah, the, the, there was a, a huge discretion between their lowest and everybody else's. And so when we looked at it, we asked the company, did you follow all of our specs? And they said, well, kind of. We said, well, not, it's not be kind of, it's got to be following our specs and they did not follow our specs. So because they didn't, the quality of the specs that they were giving us was a lower quality. So that made the difference of, it was approximately seventy thousand dollars. So then we disqualified them, which we're allowed to do under the procurement code. And then we went ahead and asked them for their best and lowest offer, uh, which is also allowed under the procurement code and that's why we got the savings that we got.
So in the first place, we're not comparing apples with apples?
That's correct. The specs, it was, it was two different brands and because our air conditioning system and our maintenance people, we all work in a particular brand. We want to make sure that everything, all of the systems are integrated and this one system wouldn't be integrated. So we'd have to buy a whole bunch of other applications to make this one system integrated. And again, I think that the district has as a, as a, as a practice continued to use the same type of systems for the purpose of integration. Ultimately, you save more money than you would save, uh, by having the same system a, as opposed to having one system in Gruia, one in Rio Grande City, one in a junior high, one elementary. It just doesn't make any economic sense.
So let me ask a, a couple of questions. I just want to make sure we're taking the lowest bid and we're following procurement to the letter of the law. Are we doing that, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Robles, we're doing that?
Okay, and did we receive that bid with the, with the big reduction from Benitez?
The most important, the most important thing to me, are we taking the lowest bid and are we following procurement to the letter of the law? And if that's the answer, I got no more questions.
Yes, sir, like I mentioned, the lowest bid was synergy, but because they not to propose or submit the required, uh, it was supposed to be train. They submitted something else, so of course we had to at that point disqualify.
Not comparing apples with apples?
Yes, sir. So we went with, of course, Benitez and they did provide an updated proposal. Of course, I do have it, but because there are some numbers that they're still working with and of course, if you all allow Mr. Penya, the authority to continue negotiating, we might be able to bring it down a little bit more.
So I'm going to ask a question again. Lowest bid?
Yes.
Procurement to the letter of the law?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, and I have two questions. Number one, this, uh, handout that you gave us, those are the bids or there's other bids? I think I misunderstood.
I gave you all the first one was NM contracting. I did not provide the proposal that was from Benitez, but it's because we're still looking to see if there might be some reduction. I can provide it to you and give it to you all, but of course it isn't the final number. So that's why I didn't want to provide it.
And then the second question is, I guess I'm excited to see that we've got four new companies to me, that it looks like they bid on our projects and, and I think that's fantastic for the district because the more competitive it is, the bidder, the, you know, lower, hopefully the lower the bids we get. But why didn't the, these four bid on the cosmetology and barber? Just wondering.
Whenever it comes to that, a lot of times it's because of the capacity of bonding. So they did not meet the requirement because as you can see, the difference, one is, of course, these are under one million, these are over two million. So at that point in time, you have bonding or their insurances or things like that, they might, or of course, depending on the project, they might not work with things like that. So at that point in time, they can't submit for those.
So it's a higher barrier to entry. Uh, man, you know, I think that, that disadvantages a lot of them. I mean, we got, I, I mean, they're all fantastic companies, but I think the more the merrier and.
Of course, we want competition because of course it brings like, yeah, you can see.
What I've heard before Jay is exactly what he's talking about, bonding capacity. A lot of people have bonding capacity, have a million, million dollars, but once you start getting to the two, three, four, five, they're very select companies that can get millions of dollars in bonding capacity.
Yes, and not everyone gets approved, so of course at that point they have to step back. A lot of people are interested at the beginning, but if they can't meet those requirements, I mean, they, they can't submit.
And our district has a higher bonding requirement.
It, it's not our district, it's based off of the amount that they're going to be proposing.
Okay.
Call for the question?
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, I don't think I got a second. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Penya, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Also, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Item ten, considering and, consider and action approving a resolution authorizing various actions to prepare for the issuance of the Rio Grande City, Gruia Independent School District Maintenance Tax Notes Series twenty twenty-three and containing other matters relating there to.
Mr. President, at this time, I want to move that we table this item for, for their date. Uh, it's, uh, basically, uh, before we go into, uh, basically getting into any bonds that we have to pay from our MNO side, I think it's very important that Ms. Robles gets a handle on what finances the state's going to provide for us. I still would like to hear the presentation, but Ms. Robles, when do you think you're going to get an idea of when the state's going to give you an idea of where, where we're going to be at?
If I, if I am not mistaken, I believe legislation or legislature ends May twenty-ninth. So once it is finalized, our stated templates should be updated and we will be able to run the numbers.
Till we get that? Till we get that, I, I think this gentleman's gonna give us a presentation, but at this time, I would like to table till we get a handle on our, on our finances to make sure we can afford it. If we can afford it, not a problem. If we can't afford it, well, it's gonna be tough. But that's my motion, to table.
Mr. Tina, I know you're financial advisor to the district, you're coming from San Antonio.
I guess we can let him present?
Yeah, we can have him present, but let's get, let's get the motion.
All right, hold on, Mr. Tegarina. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, now you can talk, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Tegarina.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and members of the board, Mr. Penia and staff, for the record, Robert Tegarina with Tegarina Galván Lawrence, the school district's financial advisor. And a quick summary of why we're here with this item this evening. We've been working with Mr. Penia and Ms. Robles for about a month and a half, maybe two months, on the shortfall, the budget shortfall from the bond election that occurred in two thousand twenty-one. One of the propositions is about eight and a half million dollars short. So we've been looking at several different options, different scenarios, on how the district could go out, obtain the funding for that shortfall to complete the project. So we've talked about another referendum, we've talked about this potential USDA financing, which could take two to five years to complete. It's a forty-year loan, low interest rate, but again, it's two to five years. I think members of the city could tell you it's a long process. And then we looked at a PFC, Public Facilities Corporation Bond, which is an expensive financing, which doesn't require a referendum, but the funds to pay that debt back also comes from the MNO side. It's expensive in the form of a higher interest rate, six and a half or higher. There's more mortgage, legal documents, it's like a, a lien on the property. We, again, it's expensive financing. Your bond counsel contacted the Texas AG's office just to make sure, is there any way that we can combine the voted elected bonds back in two thousand twenty-one with a non-voted PFC, Public Facilities Corporation Bonds, together to complete a project? And the answer was no. It took a while to get that answer, but again, we had to go out there. Your staff wanted to make sure, leave no stone unturned. So we've looked at different options, what's the best for the district, so we've come down to these maintenance tax notes. And again, the shortfall of about eight and a half million dollars, we look at everything that the district is considering for next year's budget, projects, renovations, equipment, items. So if you turn to page two, Project Sources and Uses, we've listed just in, in general, in general language, some of the items that would be considered maintenance tax notes. With maintenance tax notes, you cannot use those funds for new construction. And right now, the referendum that is cash short is a new construction. So there's no way to issue maintenance tax notes to complete that project. So again, we're looking at all these items here, and it consists of building renovations, on the curriculum instruction side, welding shop, equipment, roofing repairs, balcony rails, we have safety cameras, guardian, door barriers, plumbing and electrical repairs, HVAC repairs. So all of those items, again, are about eight million dollars to eight and a half million dollars. And we have the sources and uses below, and again, a total amount of about eight million, seven hundred and thirty thousand. This is, including the cost of issuance, it would be what we call an open market financing. We go out there and obtain a bond rating, purchase private bond insurance, an open market financing, similar, identical to what the district did back in two thousand twenty-one, when you did the refunding bonds, and when you did the bond election and sold that in two thousand twenty-one. So if you look at page three, on MNO debt, maintenance and operation debt, there's two tax rates, as you know, the MNO tax rate and the Interest and Sinking Fund tax rate, the INS, Interest and Sinking Fund. That rate is levied on the community and every school district to pay back debt that is approved by the voters. MNO tax rate, again, is used for maintenance and operation, but school districts in Texas can issue debt and have it paid from the MNO side. The restriction is, MNO debt, maintenance tax notes can only be used for repair and renovations. On, starting from left to right, outstanding debt service, that consists of four outstanding MNO debts. There's, I believe, three maintenance tax notes obligations already outstanding, and one time warrant financing. The last two financings occurred just under two million dollars combined, a million for time warrants and about nine hundred and some thousand. This was back in two thousand twenty-one, in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. So we're proposing, again, the maintenance tax notes, and why it's in order to complete that referendum shortfall of about eight point five million, that project. So the maintenance tax notes, principal interest in total, average about six hundred and fifty thousand. So what is that equivalent to in the form of a tax rate? I think Mr. Vareal asked that earlier before the meeting, and that six hundred and fifty thousand is equivalent to about three and a half cents. So again, it's coming from your MNO, maintenance and operation tax rate, not the INS, because maintenance tax note is not approved by the voters. So again, adding the full amount, we show about one point, seven million for a few years, and then if you notice, third column from the right, total debt service requirements, it drops from a million seven to a million four, eight hundred and some thousand, down to six hundred thousand. The estimated interest rate on this twenty-year open market financing is about four point two three percent. And your outstanding MNO debt that you have on the columns, the first three columns on the left, ranges anywhere from about two point five four percent to maybe about three and a half percent. And again, the last finance was about two years ago. And again, the interest rate, four point two three percent. And on page four is the timetable, and again, working with Mr. Penia and Ms. Robles for the last month and a half, almost two months, this is just information only. If, if this item were to be approved, it is not approving to get into the debt, get the district into more debt. All it is, is just working with the staff, your consultants, your financial advisor, bond counsel, work with your superintendent and CFO, to bring a financing down the road. And when I say down the road, June the twenty-second, I mean, I'm sorry, May the twenty-ninth, we'd have a rating conference call, due diligence conference call. We would price the bonds on June the twenty-first, and on June the twenty-second, at that time, at that board meeting, that's when you would be considering the financing as final, entering into the debt and obtaining that loan in order to do the, the items on project two, to free up the general fund balance roughly about eight, eight point five million, to complete the bond referendum project.
But irregardless, it's, there, as we, as we discussed earlier, there's still about a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar cost in getting rated, correct?
Yes, sir.
So if we were to agree to it, and let's say no, we'd be out twenty, between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And that's a great question, and a great point that we, the discussion we had earlier, the bond rating call would again, have that ticker on there, that a cost of about twenty-five thousand, whether the financing occurs or not, whether it's approved by the board or not, that's still a cost incurred by the district.
And, and that's like, at the end of the day, before we got into that, I think it's really important to find out if we can even afford them. That's like, I think after Ms. Robles gets the, her new template, we'll find out if we can afford six hundred thousand. If we can't find, if we can't, no necessity in spending twenty-five thousand dollars that we can't get back.
Absolutely. And this is just caution, and just wait until the dust settles up in Austin. And that's something you can bring back later, whether it be in July, once the dust settles, or in August, this item can be addressed at a later date. And, and again, plow the board, again, this is a tough decision to make, but letting the dust settle in Austin and see what the funding for all school districts will look like for next fiscal year twenty-four. But in wrapping it up, on page five, again, the working group, open market financing, the issuer, and we have the financial advisor, bond counsel, underwriters. It's the same group that was approved and provided by staff when we did the refunding back in, I believe, March, which interest rates still haven't dropped in order to execute that financing. I know it's a lot of information, but again, just to kind of make it quick, it's, only reason we're here is, again, the project costs increase, which we're seeing not only here, we're seeing it all across Texas with, we had three clients I shared with Mr. Vareal, that had bond elections, successful bond elections on May the sixth, three separate, five separate architects, a project cost increase for any items or, or projects that aren't done, and it doesn't discriminate, whether it's water, sewer, roads, school buildings, whatever's not done this year, you're looking at a minimum fifteen percent or more. Project costs increase next year, if it's two years down the road, looking at about thirty percent or more.
Thank you very much for your presentation, sir. And if everything goes right, maybe we'll call you in thirty, forty-five days to come back and we'll discuss it.
No problem, sir.
But thank you very much.
I asked your opinion, you were here when Ms. Warren talked about the possible grant from Senator Cornyn's officer. Is that, what's your take on that, or have you even been able to look at that?
No, we, we haven't been, or haven't seen any grants out there. And I know staff, normally, your staffs try to pursue those grants, as the chief did for his vehicles and, and other grants out there. We're not seeing anything. And again, the question was asked probably a couple of months ago on this USDA, uh, school financing. We have not seen one. This, myself and your bond counsel, Rick Bettes, ever seen a school district financing funded by the USDA. We did see, I believe, San Jacinto Junior College completed a dorm on campus with funding from USDA. I believe it was a forty-year loan, but the start to end process, we could never narrow it down, but I believe it was at least three years or more. So again, we haven't seen a lot of funding out there in, in a large amount, but I know Mr. Penia and Ms. Robles have been, since we've been talking about this, funding or shortfall, trying to obtain as, as much possible grants or, or free money as possible.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the USDA has a lot of requirements from environmentals to architects, to, exactly what you're saying, even to begin, it's at least a two to three year process before, when you get it, you can start, correct?
Absolutely. The normal process is the board approves, the architectural designs, the committee, you go through that. There are layers that you would have to get, I believe, your, your blueprints, or your, your schematics, the plans, everything would have to be approved by the USDA, even though you already approved it. I believe Councilman Ramirez and, and, and the chief board member, Castillo, can tell you, it is a great source of funding. We haven't seen one for any school district, but it is a long, tedious process, and a lot of hurdles and hoops to jump through.
I'd like to keep tabs on that grant, just to make sure. So you made it seem pretty hopeful, so I just.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping, we hope that, again, any possible thing, as we shared with Mr. Penia, anything that you could do to bring down the borrowing amount, and I know debt sometimes is not a, a great four-letter word, but again, any kind of grant funding that you can bring down, if there's any financing down the road, try to obtain as much free money as you can.
What I've seen in most of your grants that are being presented today, or not presented, but are out there, is everything is about security. Security the border, security the schools, security, security, security. Most, eighty, ninety percent of grants being thrown out there is everything about security, very little about anything else.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Turnover every, every stone, nothing unturned?
That's right, absolutely. And I appreciate the opportunity to present and allowing me and my firm to represent the district as your financial advisor.
You've come from a long way, so thank you for being here tonight. Thank you very much for coming, thank you so much.
Thank you, I have a great night, and I hope to see everyone at the Summer Leadership Institute. I don't know if y'all will be attending, staff and board members on June the fifteenth, we're hosting a luncheon in San Antonio, and love for the board members to attend and staff.
All right.
Thank you. I hope everybody has a great night.
Likewise.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to table. Item ten, it was second by Mr. Penia. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on RGC GSD Summer 2023 Middle School Math Teachers Professional Learning Development. Have a motion and any discussion on.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eleven, twelve, and thirteen as presented in our board packet with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items eleven through thirteen. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Penia. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Vareal.
Yeah, I just want to know, again, I don't want to harp on the same thing, but on item thirteen, consider and take possible action, I see credit for summer twenty twenty-three. If we're averaging sixty-five, seventy percent of passing on some of these things, is, again, are we getting, I, I hate to labor the point, but in, in, in school, a sixty-five was failing.
Yes, sir.
You know, and, and, you know, a seventy was a C, and a sixty-five is, and that's how I rate it. You know, an eighty is a B, and a ninety is an A, and a sixty-some is a failing. And when I see that, I think we're failing there. And I don't want to belabor the point, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, and we, we do have, we are providing for staff members that will be supporting our students, and that's why we're asking them to come in as mandatory attendance to do their online courses here on campus.
Can you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Can you, after these courses are over, can, after all these things are over, can you provide or come back to the board and find out what the success rate is from all the three schools?
Definitely. I'm currently working on the spring, because grades were due this week, so I'm working on the spring, and I will have the summer for you.
I'm interested in the summer, if we're providing, and see who's passing and who's flunking, basically.
Definitely. I'll get that for you, sir.
And I just want to throw out there, I know item eleven, twelve, and so many other items that we're gonna cover, there's always a, a grant tied to it. So I think it's important to, to show that, that the grant process, the seeking, the applying, the resolutions, they're working, so it's very nice to see. Do you have any other discussions on either item eleven, twelve, or thirteen?
Mr. President, can we add the funding source for item number twelve, just for the?
Oh, I, thank you for that. It was, on the decision-making form, it only reflected the Strong Foundations Literacy Grant. I think we need to add Title Four to that as the funding source, correct?
That's correct.
You want to amend your motion, Mr. Vareal?
Yeah, I'll amend it to that, yes.
Okay, amended motion by Mr. Vareal. Mr. Penia, will you second?
Second is amended.
All right, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Mr. Castillo, you're good. Same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Sandy Hook Promise Foundation and Royal County City Gruya ISD, September twenty, twenty twenty-three through June twenty twenty-six. Before I call for the question, I think there's two things that we've discovered through legal review and general counsel. Is, is there's an issue with the indemnification clause in that MOU, as well as venue for any legal disputes being in Connecticut. So I think that's something general counsel would like the opportunity to, to work on and resolve, to get venue here in Texas. So I, I would caution to say that if we approve something, we approve it pending that.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fourteen with a caveat that it has to be approved by our local council, or, Mr. Salazar, our attorney Salazar. If he's approved it, we go. If he doesn't approve it, it stops. But I understand venue is very important, and to have venue in Connecticut, it just doesn't make sense. So with that said, I approve that we approve item fourteen as presented, with a caveat where the thing, with the understanding that council has to approve the, has to approve it in the manner he thinks is best suited for our school district.
That's correct. And I, I've done this on many contracts for the school district, is that we require that they have, that we have mandatory jurisdiction in Texas Star County, and this one is asking for jurisdiction in Connecticut. And I'm not gonna go fight this case in Connecticut. I want them to come to our county. I mean, it's, it's, even though it's, we don't pay for this service, it's supposed to be a free service, but still, when a dispute arises, I want to make sure that it's in Texas, in Star County. And we do that with all of our school district contracts, with very few exceptions.
And to, and to add that, there's no fees, no cost, and it's anonymous reporting system for bullying, cyberbullying, harassment. It's a very good cause, but we just need to get those few things in order.
I'll, I'll make sure, and if they don't, I'll bring it back to the board, or let the board know that they decided not to change it, and if they didn't, well, I mean, the board could still approve it, but it would be against the board, board council's.
Well, I'm saying, my motion is to approve it, subject to your, whatever.
So there's a motion?
The local council.
By Mr. Vareal, do I have a second to that motion?
Second is amended.
Second by Mr. Penia. Any other discussion required? There being on all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding MOU between Royal County City Gruya ISD and BCFS Health and Human Services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Have a motion and any discussion on item fifteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items fifteen through nineteen. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, subject to discussion.
Sure. Second by Mr. Penia. Mr. Penia, you want to proceed with discussion?
Just more information on item fifteen, if we could.
Item fifteen, Mrs. Scobelo? You've been under the fire tonight, Mrs. Scobelo.
It's okay. Item number fifteen is a program, we do have BCF, HS, HH. Item number 15 is a program, we do have BCHS coming into Ringled Middle School for our seventh graders. It is a prevention outreach program that we've had in place for three years, and we are renewing our MOU with them because the grant was extended.
I just, I was limited to seventh graders, anyway.
Yes, sir. That's where, that's where they see, based on a survey, where the need is at.
All right, no, all right. Let's see if there was any benefit to us extending, extending to other grades.
Oh, we, we do work with our outreach to make sure that we do provide those services to our other grade levels, but the grant with this is with just seventh graders.
And I'll reiterate again, there's a lot of grants that are covering these items, and that's always a good sign for.
Correct. Yes, correct.
All right, any further discussion required on either items 15 through 19? There being an, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 20, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase boost reading K through eighth grade with Lasso BL grant for the 2023-2024 school year. Do we have a motion and any discussion on item 20?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 20, 21, and 22.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 20 through 22, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, any discussion required?
23.
Any discussion?
It's just a 22.
Yes. Okay. All right, there being an, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 23 has an addendum, so let me, an amendment, so let me read it carefully. Item 23 is consider and take possible action on proposed 2023 summer schools, summer school programs addendum, but there's also an amendment that has been submitted to the board by the administration, which have identified, orally identified as item 23A, and that's consider and take possible action on travel request from After School Center and Education H Department for one director, three strategists to attend the 21st Century Community Learning Center Symposium in New Orleans, Louisiana on July 18th, 2023 through July 21st, 2023. Do we have a motion and any discussion on item 23 and 23A?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 23 with the addendum, item 24 and 25, and that travel, correct me if I'm wrong, it's all grant related, correct, sir?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 23, 23A, 24, as well as 25, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second, but just to note, item 24 has, I guess, a condition inserted there, pending availability of funds.
We can discuss that, Jesus Martinez, present.
Does that need to be part of the motion?
It's already on there, so it's pending availability of funds, it's noted as such, but it's just pending, pending availability, right, Mr. Martinez?
Okay. We received the funding for title three, and I'm presently reviewing to see if we're going to be able to cover this, but everything points that yes, we would be able to cover it, okay? But I did put pending availability of funds until I review it completely.
Do we need to make an amendment?
No, it's already there, thank you so much, Mr. Martinez. I do want, item 25, Mr. Olivares, can you talk about that for us or Tanguma, either Because I think you're all doing a phenomenal job.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, superintendent. So what we are asking a resolution for this evening is to move forward with Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Chief Garcia, myself, and Ms. Tanguma presented to the Office of the Governor Public Safety Office a couple of weeks ago, they came back with a grant opportunity up to $436,000. So we are submitting this resolution as one of the grant holds that we have currently, and that's why we're here this evening to ask for that resolution to be signed. The grant will cover vehicles for the police department, an upgraded console system, some ATVs, and camera systems for the external use at the Rio Grande City High School, Gruya High School, and RMS complex, which houses early college high school.
Again, to both of you, congratulations, getting half a million dollars is not easy, so thank you very much for all your hard work, it's fantastic, thank you.
And to Ms. Tanguma, all of you, thank you so much.
When the cars get here, when the cars get here, we'll feel much better and safer for the students.
It just applied, but let's say, got to keep our hopes up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much. And then Ms. Tanguma as well, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, it was second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. The board will now convene in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, section 551.071 through 551.076, and 551.082 to 551.084. The time is 9:04 PM. All right, we're reconvening back in open session, it is section nine, on item A, that's for informational purposes only, there's no action required. On item B, do we have a motion on item B?
I move that we approve item B at discussing executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion on item C?
Motion, I move that we approve item C at discussing executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion on item D?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item D at discussing executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item E was also for information, informational purposes only, so there is no action required. Do we have a motion on item F?
Move that we approve item F as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Ms. Dr. Barrera is abstaining, the motion passes with a vote of six, it's five to zero, motion passes. Item G is for informational purposes, actually, there is no action required on item G. Do we have a motion on item H?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item H at discussing executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Dr. Barrera will be abstaining, motion passes with a vote of five in favor. And item I, this is informational only, no action required, the meeting is hereby adjourned, it is 11:03 PM. Thank you all very much.[1793.36]